Good morning and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing from the Committee on Rules, Privileges, and Elections. At this point, I'd like to remind everyone to please silence their electronic devices, and at no point going forward is anyone to approach the dais or the witness table unless you are invited to testify. If you'd like to testify and have not done so or signed up to do so, please fill out a slip in the back at the chair with one of the sergeant arms in the back. And if you have any other concerns during this hearing, please feel free to ask one of the sergeant arms to assist you, and we will address your concerns. Chair, we're ready to begin.
Good morning and welcome to the meeting of the Committee on Rules, Privileges, and Elections. I'm City Councilmember Keith Powers, Chair of the Committee. And before we begin, I'd like to introduce the other members of this committee who are present: Councilmember Brennan, Brewer, Brooks Powers, Hudson, Sanchez, Ayala, Farias. And I believe that is it for now. I'd like to acknowledge the Committee Council Chief Campania and the committee staff that worked on the appointments that we will hear today. Chief Ethics Council Pearl Moore, Director of Investigations Francesca Delavecchia, and Deputy Director of Investigations Alicia Vassal. Today's agenda is a bit larger than most meetings of this committee. We're going to begin with the reappointment by the Council of Helen Skipper and Dr. Robert Cohen to the New York City Board of Corrections, because the Board of Corrections intends to meet on May 13th to consider the renewal of DOC variances, to allow overcrowding at its facilities, to address overcrowding at its facilities. The Committee will at a necessity vote on these two candidates before we move on to other business. We'll then hold six public hearings on mayoral appointments subject to the advice and consent of the City Council, five to the Landmarks Preservation Commission, followed by one nomination for the President of the New York City Tax Commission. I'm also losing my voice, so bear with me. Our first public hearing will be on the nomination of Helen Skipper and Dr. Robert Cohen for reappointment by the Council as members of the New York City Board of Corrections. You may join us at the dais. The BOC, established by Section 626 of the New York City Charter, is responsible for the inspection and visitation at any time of all institutions and facilities under the jurisdiction of the Department of Correction, as well as the evaluation of DOC performance. The BOC must establish minimum standards for the care, custody, correction, treatment, supervision, and discipline of all persons held or confined under jurisdiction of the Department, and it shall promulgate such minimum standards in rules and regulations after giving the mayor and commissioner an opportunity to review and comment on the proposed standards, or amendments, or additions to such standards. The Board of Corrections consists of nine members; three are appointed by the mayor, three by the City Council, and three by the mayor on the nomination jointly by the presiding justices of the appellate division of the Supreme Court for the First and Second Judicial Departments. Appointments are made by three respective appointing authorities on a rotating basis to fill any vacancy. The Chairman of the Board is designated by the mayor from amongst its members. Members of the BOC are appointed for six-year terms, with vacancies filled for the remainder of the unexpired term. The BOC may appoint an executive director to serve at its pleasure with such duties and responsibilities, as the Board may assign, and other professional clerical and support personnel within appropriation for such purpose. The BOC is required to establish procedures for the hearings of grievances, complaints or requests for assistance, buy-on, or behalf of any person held or confined under the jurisdiction of the Department or by any employee of the Department. BOC also issues a report at least every three years on issues related to the Department's grievance process. Such report must incorporate direct feedback from incarcerated individuals and proposed recommendations for relevant improvements, and include a section of recommendations on how to improve the grievance process for vulnerable populations, including incarcerated individuals who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, intersex, and gender nonconforming. Such report must be submitted to the Council and posted on the Board's website. To our nominees here today, if reappointed by the Council, Helen Skipper will be eligible to serve the remainder of a six-year term, ending on October 12, 2026, and Dr. Robert Cohen will be eligible to serve the remainder of a six-year term, ending on October 12, 2029. Welcome to you both. Nice to see you again. Please raise your right hands to be sworn in.
You affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee and in response to all Councilmember questions.
Thank you. I welcome you to make an opening statement. We'll start with Dr. Cohen, and we'll go to Mrs. Skipper. Thanks. I see you too. Oh, turn your microphone on.
Members of the City Council to invite me to continue as your representative on the Board of Corrections. Very brief biography: I grew up in New York. I grew up in Queens. I went to public schools. I went to Bateson High School, and I left the city. I went to Princeton and Rush Medical College in Chicago, and came back to New York in 1981. Worked for five years on Rikers Island as the Director of Medical Services and Psychiatric Services, then became a Vice President of the Health and Hospitals Corporation for Medical Affairs, then the Director of the AIDS Center at St. Vincent's Hospital, and had a private practice in medicine. I served for 17 years on the National Commission for Correctional Healthcare, and I served as a federal appointed monitor by federal courts to oversee settlement agreements around medical care in Michigan, Ohio, Pennsylvania, New York, Florida. That's all I can remember right now. It's an honor to, it's been, I just really want to say, it's been an honor to serve the Council. I feel that you've been leading this important work in criminal justice, and I have never found any daylight between what I believed and what you presented. I don't believe that I am under your orders to vote in a certain way, but it's been an honor to work so closely with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair, Committee members. My name is Helen Skipper. I just want to thank you for this opportunity to appear again before you. And I also want to push forward the fact that I am directly incarcerated. For 25 years, I cycled in and out of Rikers Island, and for me to return there as a member of the Board of Corrections, for me to walk through those same hallways and sit in those same seats that I sat in is very beneficial. I lead by example. My life is a direct reflection of the impacts of the criminal justice and behavioral health system that I have endured. Next month, I graduate with my Master's of Criminology from John Jay. I am a criminologist. I am a researcher. But more importantly, I am a criminal justice reform advocate, leading by example. Leading because I sat there. I went through the trauma, and today, as a member of the Board of Corrections, I am so grateful to be able to enter into that space and bring beneficial programs, bring benefits, and show people by me standing in front of them that this is not the last stop, that second chances are available, that there are pathways for second chances. We're not talking about whether we have a system. We're talking about whether that system is humane, and it looks like the people that are inconst in that system and are given the proper rights and minimum standards that they should have. And I would also ask the Council to please look further and put other directly impacted people on the board, because we've been there, we've done that, we fought the good fight, and we've made it out. We lead by example. This is what people who live and work on Rikers Island needs to see, that there is a next step, there is a higher platform. So thank you again for this opportunity. Y'all know I'm a little hard, but I feel I need to be sometimes, because I'm just not taking any quarters.
Thank you. Thank you both for your testimony and your service on the Board today. I'm going to hold questions, because I'm familiar with your work pretty extensively. Being the former Cruel Justice Chair, Dr. Cohen, I know we work together often, and just deeply appreciate your independence and your thoughtfulness and your commitment. And we're always a great advocate and voice here at the Council, and as you said, there's no expectations on appointment, but certainly have been a good voice, I think, for making sure that we're doing right by people that need help.
Yes, thank you.
We appreciate that. Thank you, and thank you for your service. I'm going to move to members. I will start with Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you both very much. I think the main issue I have is, what would you do to try to get the numbers down? I'm for closing. I was Borough President. I supported closing Rikers then, continue to do so. But in order to do so, we need to get the numbers down. How would you go about that?
Well, it seems to be an overwhelming problem, but it has been done. Most importantly, it's been done. Five years ago, in a terrible time, at the beginning of the pandemic, the population was over 6,000, and within six weeks, it went down to 3,500. That required the activity of the Council, the judges, the district attorneys, the defense bar, and the Department of Corrections, and medical services, correctional health services of the Health and Hospitals Corporation. Everybody worked together. They identified people who did not need to be there, and successfully, they got it down to 3,500, which would work right now. So that's my best example of how to do it. I'm sure there are others, but that one worked.
I'd also like to add that as we try to get the numbers down, and we are succeeding, we also need to look at that from two ways. We need to look at who is entering into Rikers Island, and we also need to look at recidivism and the fact that if you go there, are you giving the appropriate services and programs and supports, so that you do not return, you do not have to walk that same path. That is another available way for us to get the numbers down, is to make sure that once they enter, they do not leave the same way they went in. Part of my story was my 25 years of the In-N-Out, that I went in addicted to drugs, suffering from an unchecked mental illness, never received any support or services, left out only to return again. We're trying to stop that from the onset as well.
Thank you. Other questions, members? Seeing none, and seeing, I don't think we have any on the virtual as well. You guys are both excused. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll now open the floor to public testimony. Any member signed up to testify in the nomination of Helen Skipper and Dr. Robert Cohen to serve on the Board of Corrections. Seeing no one signed up to testify in these, I'm going to actually now call on the clerk to call the roll call on these two nominations.
Thank you, Chair Powers. The Committee will vote on two resolutions approving the following appointments to the Board of Corrections: Helen Skipper and Dr. Robert Cohen. Chair Powers, we'll start with you.
I vote aye.
Thank you. And now, Councilmembers Salamanca.
I vote aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Salamanca. Councilmember Ayala.
Aye.
Brennan. Councilmember Brennan, thank you. Councilmember Brooks Powers.
I vote aye.
Councilmember Brewer.
Aye.
Councilmember Farias.
I vote aye.
Councilmember Hudson.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Thank you. Chair Powers, by a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, both resolutions have been adopted.
Thank you. Congratulations on your reappointment. Thank you, guys, for your testimony as well. Our next group of hearings will be on nominations by the mayor for the Landmarks Preservation Commission pursuant to Section 31 and 320 of the New York City Charter, and by letters dated April 25, 2025, Mayor Eric Adams requested the advice and consent of the Council regarding the appointments of Erasmus Ikpey May, I'm sorry if I got that wrong, Stephen Wilder, Frank Mahan, Stephen Chu, and Angie Master to the Landmarks Preservation Commission. Pursuant to Section 320 of the Charter, the New York City Landmarks Preservation Commission, also known as the LPC, has the power to designate landmarks, interior landmarks, scenic landmarks, and historic districts. LPC has a duty after a public hearing to designate a landmark site for each landmark to be designated. The LPC has also the power to regulate construction, reconstruction, alterations, and demolitions of landmarks, and to approve and deny requests for certificates of appropriateness and certificates of no effect. The LPC consists of 11 members. The membership must include at least three architects, one historian qualified in the field, one city planner or landscape architect, and one realtor, and must include at least one resident from each of the five boroughs. Members serve for terms of three years and serve until the appointment of a successor. The mayor also designates one of the LPC members to serve as Chair of the LPC and designates another member to serve as the Vice Chair of the LPC. The members of the LPC, with the exception of the Chair, serve without compensation but are reimbursed for necessary expenses incurred in the course of performing their duties. I extend my welcome to the candidates who have joined us today. You're welcome to join us here at the dais. I'm going to go through a quick bio. Frank Mahan, as a resident of Manhattan, has been nominated to the mayor to serve on the LPC for a three-year term, beginning on June 29, 2025, and ending on June 28, 2028. He's worked at the international architecture firm Skidmore, Owens, and Merrill since 2008, where he is principal and the leader of the firm's adaptive reuse practice. Prior to joining the firm, he worked for renowned architects Stan Allen and Frank Gehry. A few of the adaptive reuse projects he has worked include landmark and historic buildings such as the Waldorf Astoria, South Street Seaport Museum, Moynihan Train Hall, retail and office space in the Farley Post Office, New York Stock Exchange, and renovations of Lever House and 28 Liberty. He's worked on new construction projects as well, including One World Trade Center, 35 Hudson Yards, Jersey City's General Square, to name a few. He's a winner of the American Institute of Architects Young Architects Award, and was named to Building and Design Construction's 40 Under 40 List in 2017. He's a 28th grad graduate of Princeton University's School of Architecture. Stephen Chu, resident of Queens, has been a commissioner since 2023. Is up for reappointment for a three-year term expiring on June 28, 2027. He has worked at a neat architects, where he's now a design principal at the firm, specialized in the design of cultural, educational, civic institutions, including NYU Langone's Kimmo Pavilion, International Performing Arts Center in Shenzhen, China, Jazz at Lincoln Center's Rose Hall, the facade restoration and master plan at the Public Theater, redesign of Shakespeare in the Parks Telecore Theater, and much more. Since 2015, he's been Associate Professor at the Pratt Institute's Graduate School of Architecture. He's a member of AIA, and a 1994 graduate of Berkeley's College of Environmental Design. Erasmus Ikpey, you're going to do the pronunciation for me. Resident broker has been nominated by the mayor to serve the remainder of a three-year term that expires on June 28, 2027. He's currently Senior Associate at the firm Sabir Richardson and Weinberg Engineering and Architecture, where he's worked since 2012. In that capacity, he's worked on projects for the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey, the Office of Management and Budget, the MTA, School of Construction Authority, the Administration for Children's Services. He's been a registered architect in the state of New York since 2016, and is a 2008 graduate of the Georgia Institute of Technology. Stephen Wilder, a resident of Manhattan, has been nominated to serve a remainder of a three-year term that expires on June 28, 2027. Since February 2013, he's owned his own architecture firm, which has worked on a variety of residential commercial projects. He's been a registered architect since October 2014. For nine years prior to starting his firm, he worked as a project manager for construction projects at JP Design and Abyssinian Development Corporation. He's a 2004 graduate of Carnegie Mellon University. Angie Master, resident of Staten Island, has served on Landmarks Preservation Commission since 2023. She's been renominated by the mayor to serve the remainder of a three-year term that expires on June 28, 2027. She was recommended for the position by Staten Island Borough President Vito Facella. Since 2015, she's been Associate Broker in Real Estate at Prendamano Real Estate in Staten Island. Her portfolio includes small retail and strip malls. Her reappointment would fulfill the requirement that one member of the LPC be a realtor, and that one must be from Staten Island. Before you begin your testimony, I ask you all to raise your hands and be sworn in.
You affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee and in response to all Councilmember questions.
Thank you. And first of all, congratulations on your nominations and renominations, and thank you for being with us here today. We'll start over here, and we'll just go down the line for opening statements, and then we'll follow with questions.
Hello, Mrs. Zon. Good afternoon, and thank you, Chair Powers and members of the Committee, for this opportunity to testify before you. It is a great honor to be renominated for the position of Commissioner of the New York City Landmarks Preservation Commission. Having served as a commissioner for over two years now, I have gained experience and a better understanding of how to carry out the responsibilities of an LPC commissioner. It has been a collaborative and rewarding experience working with my fellow commissioners and LPC staff to enforce Landmarks law in this constantly growing, evolving, and adapting city of ours. As an architect, I've had the fortune to work for some of the city's most important institutions, and had a hand in several cultural civic projects that have been approved by the LPC over the past 30 years, including the Brooklyn Museum, the Public Theater at 425 Lafayette, New York City Center at Carnegie Hall, to name a few. I'm currently a partner at Iniet Architects, formerly Pulchek Partnership, where I've been employed since 1996. My mentor and former employer, the late James Pulchek, founded the firm on principles rooted in the tradition of respect for context and belief that making architecture is an inherently civic act that comes with great social responsibility. He taught me that a building must belong to its community, and reminded us of the power of public space. These are principles that have guided me through my years in the practice. I believe that the experience I've gained in the practice of architecture will continue to benefit the Commission. In the past years, I've learned much about the process and dynamics of the Commission and how to carry out its mission to protect New York City's architecturally, historically, and culturally significant buildings and sites. Some areas where I feel that I've brought insight and value are: understanding the perspective of architects coming to the Commission, and the challenges they may face technically and programmatically. I also understand the flexibility they have in implementing a design. There are many variables that need and should be considered when dealing with sensitive historic context. I'm able to analyze the architectural and therefore historical characteristics of a building and/or streetscape, and apply that knowledge towards the design of a newly proposed architecture. Experience in construction methods, project delivery process, and budget implications and their potential impact on the project at hand. Have experience in designing various building typologies, cultural, educational, commercial, and civic. I can bring some insight into the issues and factors involved in each building type and how they may affect the historic settings. Understand the value of proportion, scale, and harmony. There are characteristics that should be recognized in the historical context and reflected in the new work. And I believe that the design concept and detailing to ensure proper execution and quality are both equally important in the proposal. And finally, an understanding that the changing needs of the city, its institutions, residents, and visitors require upgraded facilities that must be accommodated in the historic context. I can only hope that the skills and experience I've gained continue to serve and be useful to the Commission and the people of New York City. This city represents the past, present, and future. I understand that it needs to evolve, adapt, and change, that it can continue its tradition of being diverse, progressive, inclusive, and stay vibrant and relevant into the future. If reappointed, I would do my best to apply the law to preserve and protect sites that reflect diversity and history in all five boroughs, and ensure that they remain relevant and vibrant in the future years to come. It is an honor to have served the past years on Landmark Preservation Commission. I take this very seriously, and the responsibility of preserving the history and culture of this great city. It is my desire to continue to play a role in the stewardship, as it continues to adapt and meet and evolve the needs of the city and its diverse population. Thank you for your consideration of my nomination, and I welcome any questions.
Thank you, Speaker Adams, Chair Powers, and members of the Committee, for this opportunity to testify before you. I am honored to be considered for reappointment to the New York City Landmarks Preservation Commission. My name is Angie Master. I am a Korean-American immigrant who grew up on the West Coast, and I've been a proud resident of Staten Island for the last 30 years. I graduated from Stanford University with a BA in International Relations and an MA in International Educational Policy. I later earned an MBA from Columbia Business School. For the last decade, I have worked in commercial real estate across New York City, facilitating sales and leasing across a wide range of sectors as varied as retail, restaurants, religious institutions, educational facilities, and office buildings. Since February 2023, I have had the honor of serving on the New York City Landmarks Preservation Commission. I don't come to LPC as an architect or as a preservationist, but as the real estate representative. I have truly enjoyed my role at LPC and have learned so much about historical architectural styles and terms. I've gained a newfound appreciation for mullions, lentils, and cornices. During my time on the Commission, I believe I have contributed in three meaningful ways. One, real estate expertise. The Landmarks Law recognizes that historic preservation is good for the economy of the city, and that proper regulation of historic buildings will strengthen the city's economy. As a realtor, I've been able to help the Commission consider how historic buildings can remain vibrant and functional for their tenants, while still supporting the LPC's mission to preserve the building's historical architectural features. For example, Aritzia, the fashion retailer, came before LPC to propose the opening of two new retail locations in Manhattan, one at 115 Fifth Avenue in the Ladies' Mile Historic District, and another at 608 Fifth Avenue, the Galette Building, an individual landmark. I was able to speak to the retailer's need for appropriate signage and display of merchandising. Secondly, I represent Staten Island. Last June, I was especially proud when LPC designated the Frederick Douglass Memorial Park on Staten Island as an individual landmark. It was established in the 1930s as an African-American cemetery. It reminds us of a shameful time in New York City history, but one that deserves recognition and remembrance. This designation had strong community support, and Councilmember Camilla Hanks even gave public testimony before LPC. And third, equity in designations for underrepresented communities and outer boroughs. I'm proud that during my tenure, the Commission has designated sites such as the Joseph Rodman Drake Park and Enslaved African Burial Ground in the Bronx, and the Frederick Douglass Memorial Park in Staten Island. We have also designated individual landmarks in the Bronx, including the Old Croton Aqueduct as a scenic landmark, the Bronx Opera House, and the Tremont Branch of the New York Public Library. Serving on the Landmarks Preservation Commission has been a privilege. I am proud to have played a small role in preserving the cityscape and the unique sense of place in New York City's historic districts. If reappointed, I hope to continue to share my expertise as a realtor and my knowledge of Staten Island, as I work collaboratively with my fellow Landmarks Preservation Commissioners. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Powers and members of the Committee. I want to thank you for holding this hearing and for considering my nomination to serve on the Landmarks Preservation Commission. I would also like to express my deep gratitude to the administration for this nomination. I believe that city service is an honor. I am writing to express my fervent desire to serve as a member of the Landmark Preservation Commission. As an architect and owner of Thinkwilder Architecture from Harlem, New York, I bring over two decades of experience in shaping the built environment with a deep commitment to community enrichment that has been the cornerstone of my career. My academic credentials, which include a bachelor's degree in architecture from Howard University and a master's degree in the science of architecture from Carnegie Mellon University, provide a solid foundation for my professional journey. My affiliations with esteemed organizations such as American Institute of Architects, AIA, the Preservation League of New York State, and the National Organization of Minority Architects, where I currently serve as the President for the New York Coalition of Black Architects, underscore my dedication to advocating for the preservation of our architectural heritage. My formal involvement in historic preservation began in 2021 when I became a trustee for the Preservation League. Since that time, I've been exposed to projects and sites throughout the state that highlight the challenges, values, significance, and impact of preservation work. Through my service on committees such as Seven to Save, the Preservation Opportunity Fund, Excellence Awards, and Governance, my knowledge has deepened around preservation policy, funding strategies, advocacy, and the intersection of preservation with equity, sustainability, and community development. This experience has strengthened my commitment to ensuring that preservation efforts reflect the full breadth of New York's cultural and architectural heritage. My passion for preservation, however, was sparked nearly two decades ago. My first job after graduate school, working in Harlem, ignited a deep commitment to improving and protecting my community. Harlem is not just a neighborhood to me. It embodies a rich history and cultural significance that I hold dear. I cherish its legacy and strive to honor its past while contributing meaningfully to its future. This personal connection fuels my belief- The personal, this personal connection fuels my belief in the vital role the Landmarks Preservation Commission plays in safeguarding New York City's diverse architectural narrative. My work with two Harlem-based companies during a transformative period for the neighborhood provided valuable experience in revitalizing and preserving historic brownstones, multifamily residences, churches, and cultural institutions. Many of these projects were designated landmarks or located within historic districts. Through this work, I came to understand the critical importance of restoration and the profound impact these buildings have on community identity. I also witnessed the loss of unrecognized structures that, while not officially landmarked, were essential to the fabric of the neighborhood. Recently, someone asked me about the backdrop of my professional headshot and why I chose that location. I explained that every member of our team selected a Harlem landmark meaningful to them. Damaris posed in front of the Hamilton House. Malika chose Marcus Garvey Park, and Montgomery selected Strivers Row. I chose Asteroe as a group of individually designated row houses built in the 1880s. That location is especially significant to me because, at my first job after graduate school, I was part of the team responsible for preparing the architectural drawings submitted to the Landmarks Preservation Commission for the restoration of one of those homes. It was my introduction to the formal process of preservation and continues to shape how I view the role of architecture in honoring and sustaining community legacy. I am drawn to the Commission's mission of preserving the buildings and places that reflect New York City's rich cultural, social, and architectural history. My belief in this mission aligns with my strong interest in utilizing architecture to uplift underserved communities. Serving on the Commission would not only be an honor, but also an opportunity for me to further my knowledge of effective historic preservation while collaborating with dedicated individuals who share my passion. I am dedicated, motivated, and enthusiastic about contributing to the preservation of our city's history, and I believe my unique perspective and experiences would be a valuable addition to the Commission. Thank you for considering my nomination. I look forward to the opportunity to discuss my vision and commitment to historic preservation further.
I would like to extend, thank you. I would like to extend greetings to the Speaker, Chair Powers, and all other council members for the opportunity to sit before this committee. I am honored to be considered as candidate for the New York City Landmarks and Preservation Commission. Growing up west of the Hudson in New Jersey, I can always remember wanting to be an architect. My journey began with a bucket of Lincoln Logs given to me by my father as a child. That was followed by a formal education in the arts, and over the years, I progressively gained more knowledge about the design world. During my graduate studies, I spent two consecutive summers embedded in the urban landscapes of Europe, exploring art and architecture. Neighborhood fabrics, placemaking, cultural influence, the convergence of new and old, and adaptive reuse were major themes. These experiences greatly influenced my understanding of the built environment and insisted me in developing the necessary tools to critically examine it. Today, I identify a bit of architecture in everything and use it to help me assess the world around me. This multifaceted profession allows for an expression that is creative, structured, and aesthetically acute, which also explains my decision to reside in the culturally and architecturally rich neighborhood of Bedford-Stuyvesant, Brooklyn. Currently, I run the architecture department at the engineering and architecture firm of Sevier Richardson &amp; Weisberg. There, I oversee matters specific to various disciplines, provide direction for project delivery, function as an expert technical resource, distribute information for professional development, and facilitate quality control procedures. With two decades of diverse architectural experience, I apply my competencies to a wide range of project types, including transportation, institutional, mixed use, resiliency, and building assessments. I pride myself as an interdisciplinary and, most importantly, a problem solver. With these skills, I hope to bring real-world knowledge about the built environment to the Commission. I am confident that my work within the public sector and with our city's infrastructure will benefit New Yorkers. I have inspected hundreds of city-owned properties, provided data for capital improvements, and worked on complex infrastructure-based projects that reside in the confines of inflexible budgets. I believe that these types of practical cost implications should be considered when making determinations that affect our city and its eight million-plus inhabitants. I am also no stranger to the Landmarks Preservation Commission process. I converted a historically important modernist single-family residence on the Upper East Side, located at 32 East 74th Street, into a triplex residence. Working with the staff preservationists and the Commission, we were able to maintain the aesthetic integrity of the property while providing a rooftop addition and massaging the front entry to accommodate an ADA-compliant elevator. Most notably, we salvaged existing steel windows on the front and rear facades, thus celebrating their delicately articulated profiles. At the completion of the project, we were able to preserve the building's cultural significance as being one of the first modernist structures in the city. In 2021, I completed a six-year stint as a board member and parliamentarian for the National Organization of Minority Architects. There, I focused on its mission to foster justice and equity in communities of color through outreach, community advocacy, professional development, and design excellence. Prior to that appointment, I worked tirelessly in Noma's local New York chapter. There, we crafted valuable programming for our membership and curated introductory camps for children, like Project Pipeline, a Noma national initiative designed to increase the number of Black architects in the nation, currently at a steady 2%, by showcasing architecture as a viable career path to children who would otherwise, otherwise never be exposed to the profession. Again, it is an honor to be considered as a candidate for the Landmarks Preservation Commission. I believe my diverse experience and variable skills would add value to the already illustrious Commission. If appointed, I look forward to championing the Commission's charge to protect architecturally, historically, and culturally significant buildings and sites within New York City and ensure they can meet the challenges of the future. Thank you for your nomination, and I look forward to fielding your questions.
Good morning, Chair Powers and members of the committee. Thank you for holding this hearing and considering my nomination to serve on the Landmarks Preservation Commission. I'm also grateful to the administration for this nomination. I'm an architect who, if appointed, will bring to the Commission extensive expertise in preservation and adaptive reuse. I believe that historic preservation, and more broadly, how we care for our past, is one of the most critical activities for charting our collective future. That is why I've spent much of my nearly two-decade career working to protect and preserve New York City's architectural and cultural heritage. I'm a design principal at Skidmore Owens &amp; Merrill, one of the largest and most influential architecture, interior design, engineering, and urban planning firms in the world. In this role, I lead our adaptive reuse practice, coordinating our work on historic buildings around the world, preserve, to preserve them for the future, retrofit them for energy efficiency, and convert them to vibrant new uses. But it is working on civically scaled projects in my hometown that is the most rewarding. I've led the restoration and adaptive reuse of a number of designated New York City landmarks. At the James A. Farley Post Office across from Penn Station, my team converted 1 million square feet of warehouse space to public concourses and retail, connecting the surrounding neighborhood with a new Moynihan train hall, all surrounded by four floors of high-tech office space above. The result is a historically rooted front door for Manhattan's newly developed Far West Side. At the Waldorf Astoria on Park Avenue, we are meticulously restoring the many public spaces, lobbies, lounges, and event rooms, while reinvigorating the rest of the building with new hotel rooms and residences. The 1.6 million-square-foot undertaking will revive one of New York City's most iconic landmarks and once again invite New Yorkers to meet me at the clock in its celebrated lobby. I've also helped to pioneer work with historic buildings of more recent vintage, mid-century modern, while revisiting many of my firm's own buildings now landmarked themselves. In the Financial District, my team adapted One Chase Manhattan Plaza after J.P. Morgan moved to Midtown. The neighborhood had changed around the building, transforming into a 24-hour residential community. So, we opened up its fortress-like base and plaza to entertainment, food, and shopping, supporting the families that live nearby. In Midtown, we adapted the glass jewel box at Fifth Avenue and 43rd Street, originally housing manufacturer's handover trust, from a rundown bank branch to vibrant retail, kicking off the rejuvenation of Lower Fifth Avenue. And most recently, I led a loving restoration of the pinnacle of mid-century corporate modernism, Lever House, on Park Avenue at 53rd Street. We approached this project with the careful eye of material scientists, polishing the building to the high gleam of its mid-century heyday. Whether classical in form or mid-century modern, my team and I begin these projects with deep research to understand the history of a building before shaping its next life. We must understand the original architect's intent, the way a building has changed over time, since all buildings do change, and how it has served its community. These influences, ranging from buildings' changing meaning to its historic construction technologies, must be understood and woven together to create a new future. Noted architecture critic Justin Davidson recently wrote in New York Magazine of my work at the Waldorf Astoria and at Lever House, "His approach to historic preservation is both sweepingly philosophical and obsessively detailed." Our collective history and culture, relationship with the environment, and changing patterns of living all come together in preservation. I cannot think of another field that deserves such careful stewardship by diverse and experienced professionals. Through preservation, we have the opportunity to adapt our city to new patterns of living, address climate change by caring for the buildings we already have, and preserve cultural continuity within our communities. I was introduced to the possibility of building as a professional at a young age. My grandfather was a contractor and my father was a public school teacher. He taught architecture in high school, and I took his class all four years. After starting my professional journey in his classes, I made my way east for graduate school at Princeton, where I met and eventually married a native New Yorker who grew up on the Upper West Side. We've settled in Manhattan, where we also send our daughter to school. I and I have been working ever since to protect and preserve New York City's architectural and cultural heritage while giving historic buildings new life. I would be honored to serve our great city and my fellow New Yorkers in this new capacity on the Commission. Thank you for your time. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, and thank you all for your testimony. I'll start with members first, and I'm going to come back and ask some questions. I'll start with Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you very much. I have questions that are very specific. I want to know what you think and when you think it's appropriate to grant a hardship. I want to, I want to hear your definition of demolition by neglect. And I want to know what the Department of Buildings and LPC can do to permit necessary restoration without the owner signing off. I guess start with you, Mr. Chum. Should I repeat the question?
Yes, yes, please.
When is it appropriate to grant a hardship? When, what is demolition by neglect according to you? And what can the Department of Buildings and LPC do to permit necessary restoration without the owner signing off? Those are my three questions.
We'll just go one at a time down the line.
Okay, so let's, the first question was...
When is it appropriate to grant a hardship?
When is it appropriate to deem hardship? Well, the Landmark Commission has to accept every application. If, if the application asks for hardship, it is something that we have to review and look at the case that they're making. I will say that every case is specific, and the commissioners will look at all the information available to us. We also recently have had an application that came to the Commission. It was a very robust process and had multiple hearings. There was extensive testimony. The Commission had expert analysis. We do have a engineer, structural engineer, that we can turn to to look at and do our own investigation to validify the, the, the claims of the applicant in terms of hardship. In that case, the application was ultimately withdrawn. If that were to come back again, we would have to carefully look at their case that they're making for hardship and review it and determine whether or not we feel that it was appropriate or not. Should we go on to the next, or do you want to see any of the others?
Demolition by neglect.
Okay. Demolition of neglect. In terms of demolition, I would say that, again, in every case, we have to look at whether or not the, the piece that's being asked to be demolished needs to be revealed to see what importance it has per the letter of law, what the designation was, and how important that aspect or feature of the building was to its designation. If it was an important part of the designation, then we would look at opposing that or seeing why it was being demolished and look at the case and its specifics.
Well, sometimes the owner says one thing, and then the people who want to keep it standing say something else. So you're saying you have to look at it carefully?
I think we'd have to investigate it, and as I said before, if, if the demolition is claimed or asked for because of neglect and condition of the, of the building and its structure, that would need to be investigated. And as I said prior, we would have somebody, a third-party engineer, also look at it. The DOB also can provide us with engineers' expert opinions at our request.
Okay. And what can the DOB and LPC do to permit necessary restoration without the owner signing off?
The Landmark Commission can and will protect a facility or a structure that is being protected and demand that it be, of course, being taken if the owner has left it in the neglect state.
So then you're saying if it's in neglect state by the owner, then somebody else could sign off?
I'm sorry, could you ask that again?
If, if in fact, the owner hasn't taken care of the building? We all want to save our landmarks.
The landmarks can, again, I don't want to speak out of hand if I legally do not understand this question. My understanding is that we have the power to demand that certain reparation be made to a landmark building.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Councilmember Brewer, in terms of your first question, I think you're asking about hardship cases. In the two years that I've been on, I think we've only had one hardship application before us. And I think we actually spent a lot of time, there was a lot of material, and there was a lot of testimony in, in terms of the, the process. I believe over eighty people signed up to testify, and we had a lot of public testimony. And ultimately, that application was withdrawn. Is that, I think, is that what you're...
Yeah, if it comes back, how would you analyze it?
Yeah, that, that's a really good question. But given that it is an open, open application, I don't feel that I can, I can comment on that because I believe that it, it may come back.
Okay. And then in terms of demolition by neglect, how would you deal with that?
So demolition by neglect, I think I can recall that we do have some applications that we had, in particular, I think Greenwich Village, where there was concern by the community. I think that what we typically do in these situations is that we ask for an enhanced review by our engineer. I think the DOB and LPC, we have a structural engineer that goes in and, I guess, essentially triple checks to make sure that there's structural integrity when there's construction.
Okay, and again, when you have two different, you have the owner, and then you have perhaps somebody else testifying from the community, they have two different definitions of what is actually neglect sometimes. You know, there might be reasons to have it, you know, neglect. Who, who would you look to?
I, I think that, you know, we have public testimony for a reason because we want to hear all sides, and I think on a case-by-case basis, we would have to very carefully consider it. But I do want to reassure you that, you know, we, we're volunteers here, and we are here because we do want to protect and preserve these, these buildings, and we care very deeply about that.
Okay. And then finally, DOB and LPC to permit necessary restoration... And then finally, DOB and LPC to permit necessary restoration without the owner signing off, how do you feel about that?
You know, I feel like that's really not within my purview because it's more of a DOB process than what we do, you know, where we consider cases that really come before us.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Good morning, and thank you for your questions. I think the first question was in regards to when is it appropriate to grant hardship? As a new nominee for the LPC, I'm not experienced enough to really speak on when it is or when it's not appropriate for hardship. I can say that I know part of the reason why I want to be on the commission is for the responsibility of protecting and preserving New York's historical buildings. And I do know from what I understand that granting hardship is also rare. So beyond that, I can't really speak on it. I think it does come down to individual case and actually seeing all of the information that's in front of me before I can make a decision on that or comment on that.
Okay, and demolition by neglect, is that something that you can comment on? How you would...
No, I understand it as an architect, and also that someone that's been doing this for over 20 years, I know what it looks like. But as a commissioner on the LPC, I don't think I can really speak on it at this point without having experience working in that space.
Also, DOB and LPC to permit necessary restoration without the owner signing off, can you comment on that?
No, because I don't think, I'm not sure if it falls within the LPC's purview of applications for landmark designation.
All right, next.
Please begin with the first question again.
Sure. What is it appropriate to grant a hardship?
Deem appropriate to grant a hardship? Again, I'm new to this process, and I'm looking forward to working on the commission and to be able to better field these types of questions. But to my understanding, hardship is something that's not normally a case in the Landmarks Department. But I am looking forward to working with more types of this in the future.
And demolition by neglect, do you have some sense of how you feel about that or how you would address it?
Again, as stated by Mr. Wilder as well, I do understand the term itself as an architect, but under the purview of landmarks and how that is utilized, I would need more experience to do so.
Okay, and then Department of Buildings and LPC, what can they do to permit necessary restoration without the owner signing off? And although you have a building that's falling apart and the owner doesn't want to do anything, would you want the tenant sort of to sign off?
I understand the importance of wanting to preserve structures and also knowing that that is the charge of the commission itself. But my knowledge in that is limited. Just based as an architect, I know we always look for the signature of the owner, more or less, to move projects forward. But I'm not sure how that applies, and I would need to do some more research and have more understanding about the process.
Go ahead, yep.
Hi there. With regards to when it's appropriate to grant hardship, you know, I honestly don't know a lot about that process, although I do understand within landmarks, it's fairly long and detailed economic and legal analysis that happens. It's fairly unusual. So I would look forward to learning more from my colleagues, landmark staff and council, should that become before us. I would say that, you know, the remit of LPC is to preserve and protect buildings. It's what I've spent my career working to do, and I would look forward to doing that.
In terms of demolition by neglect, do you have some sense of that?
I understand the concept that that is, you know, as an architect, it's a shame to see neglect of any sort with regards to buildings, but I don't honestly know how that can be taken into account by LPC now. I'd have to learn more.
And then DOB and LPC to permit necessary restoration without the owner signing off, if in fact the owner won't sign off to keep the building in good shape? Would the tenant be able to do that, do you think?
I don't know, ma'am. That sounds like a legal question, you know, with regards to permitting that is likely outside the purview of commissioners.
Okay, I mean, just so you know, in terms of hardship, you may know there are like four categories that you have to meet in order to have a hardship. And we feel in many cases, you know, the building, you can have to have a way to meet the hardship, and in many cases, we feel they don't. So we're very conscious of not granting hardships. Thirteen landmark buildings have been demolished. We don't want any more landmark buildings demolished. So just so you know, there are four categories. You might want to look at them. Thank you. I've memorized them, just so you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hudson.
Thank you. I guess my question is somewhat related to the questions from Councilmember Brewer, but a few of you mentioned in your testimonies the loss of structures that, though may not have been landmarked, were significant to the local communities, and also mentioned preserving, you know, structures that might be important to historic communities. And so I'm just wondering how you would suggest LPC preserve these types of structures? What type of assessment might you make if there are structures that might be important to the community, significantly, culturally significant or relevant to a particular community, that might be slated for destruction, and how you think LPC should look at those
Okay, sorry, could you just, the first part of your question, could you repeat?
I guess I'm just trying to get a sense of how you would suggest LPC assesses or addresses structures that they might suggest, well, I guess, let me give a more specific example. I represent a district in Brooklyn that, you know, has a lot of landmarked buildings, but also buildings that aren't necessarily landmarked, that are culturally significant, historically significant to the community, historically Black community. And so there, we've seen buildings in my district and in other districts that have been demolished, that were beautiful homes or beautiful structures that had significance, historical significance to the community, but that LPC deemed should be demolished, which, you know, separate and apart from like any legal ownership, whatever, situations, I'm just trying to assess how you think LPC should handle those types of matters in the future, or since you have experience already, maybe how you've thought about them.
Let me try to answer your question. If I don't, stop me and...
And it's not really like a gotcha question. I'm just curious to know, you know...
Okay, I think I understand. So the commission does have a robust and talented staff that actually is constantly full-time looking at the five boroughs and doing research to figure out which potential buildings or districts would be designated, which we as commissioners then review. I will say that in the past two years that we've been on the commission, we've approved and green-lighted every proposal that came from our staff. That regards one aspect of your question, in terms of process. The other part of your question, I'll just say, first of all, the five boroughs of New York City, I believe, are important. I also want to say that historical significant and aesthetics and physical fabric are both important to the Landmark Commission. I think that it would depend on the specific structure in question in terms of the significance of the place, maybe what event happened there. And we would need to review the details of each of these cases. They all are specific and have factors that weigh more on historical events or maybe more on physical building fabric. It is important that, because ultimately, we're regulating physical fabric of the city, that it represents a part of the period of the style of the time. If the building doesn't any longer appear the way it did when the event happened, maybe landmarks wouldn't be the right avenue to protect that structure. There may be other ways to protect its historical significance in the community. I hope that somewhat answered.
Yeah, thank you for that question. The list of, I guess, buildings or historic districts that come before us to be reviewed is really prepared by the Landmarks Preservation Staff. I think that they continually do surveys. They spend a lot of time and energy kind of reviewing their list of, I think, architecturally significant, and in the last two years, a lot of landmarks that have been culturally and historically significant as well. So by the time we see it, it's already been kind of proposed, and, you know, we kind of look at it on the merits once it's been researched and proposed to us. So I'm sorry that something in your district that was culturally significant was not able to be on the list and, you know, forwarded in time that we could see it. But, you know, by the time we get the proposal, you know, the staff has really, you know, gone through the process that you're talking about.
Thanks for your question. So I think for me, this is a two-part answer. I think as, similar to what's been stated, from my understanding of how things work, the Landmarks Preservation Commission staff are the ones that looks at these types of projects throughout the New York City communities. So as a commissioner, I'm not sure if I have a role in getting to decide how that process works. So that's the first part. But the second part is kind of my personal and professional experience with these types of things. And I'm one of those people that, mentioned in my testimony, having to kind of endure and see those things right before my eyes. Growing up in Harlem and kind of living through the changes of what it was and what it is now, it was definitely bittersweet to see places that I grew up going to, whether it was restaurants or various buildings that were, and spaces that were in, places that we thought were historic. And seeing those things no longer there, especially today, I think those are some of the things that sparked my interest in landmarks and wanting to learn more and seeing how I can empower myself and also my community. And then also, the past few years that I've been a board member or trustee on the Preservation League of New York State, every year, they put me on the Seven to Save Committee. And so it's like, you get 30, 40, 50 applications to review, and you can only pick seven throughout the entire state. And so you hear, you see these really long applications that people put, and they're, you know, putting it all out there of why this project should be saved. And you kind of wish you could save all of them, but it's called Seven to Save. It's limited in what we can do. And so I think something that can always be done is really informing the public, right? I think it can go both ways in terms of the public really understanding what they have in their communities, what the value of some of these historical places are, so that it becomes more of a relationship with landmarks and the entire city of what should be kept and what's the process of making sure that these places are preserved. And I think most of the work I do is really about partnerships and not just, hey, this is our job. But I think as an entire city, we all have to look at all of these different situations.
I guess first, I'd like to say thank you for your question, and I understand the importance of it as well. Hopefully, if I'm allowed to become a commissioner, I'll be able to look in more depth at things like this. The charge for the commission is to protect architecturally, historical, and cultural significances within our city. And through that protection, it's important because it actually, it deals with the economics of the city and just the cultural life of it as well. And these are things that are important to me. So if, given the opportunity, these are things I would want to work with as well and actually see what I can do to actually maybe provide some type of influence or so as I can in whatever capacity that I can to actually be able to serve, to actually serve and actually preserve structures that may not more or less be in the system, per se, and see how, what can be done to actually maybe move things along.
Thank you very question, Councilmember Hudson. I appreciate it because I interpret it in a way to be about what is the meaning of architecture, of buildings. And I believe it's certainly not just about aesthetic styles or movements. Buildings signify, you know, history, they signify community, they signify culture, and this is such an important reason that their preservation is important. You know, so I definitely believe that history can be preserved through architecture. I think of buildings as kind of like the framework, like the scaffolding upon which our shared social experiences are built. So it can be very disruptive, you know, when one is demolished in one's community. It's much better to preserve, even if it's reused, as something different, there's a kind of continuity that's created there. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just, you know, want to say that I think it's important, as commissioners, that you all are open to pushing back against the recommendations and suggestions that are made by the staff. I recognize that, you know, your job is different from what theirs is, but I think rather than always just going with whatever it is they're proposing or suggesting, it's important sometimes to have folks who can question what's been presented, why it's been presented, and who's going to be most directly impacted by the decisions that you all will make. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ferris.
Thank you, Chair. I am a proud Bronx City Councilmember, and so I know really like firsthand how critical the Landmarks Commission is, not only in protecting the city's history, but also trying to reflect its full diversity and really future potential. So I have a couple of questions. I'm going to, I really have tried to minimize them because there's so many of you that need to answer, so if you can work with me, being as brief as possible, just so we can get through them. How do you view the role of the Landmarks Preservation Commission in balancing historic preservation with the need for new housing, infrastructure, and economic development? And then just coupled with that is, in your views, how can preservation practices evolve to better reflect the diversity of New York City's history, particularly around communities of color and working-class folks that have been historically overlooked? Anyone can start.
I'm sorry, didn't hear the end of your, could you repeat again?
Sure, so just how do you view the role of the LPC in balancing historic preservation with new housing, infrastructure, or economic development? And then coupled with that, how do you view the preservation practices evolving for the LPC to really reflect the full diversity of New York City and around the communities of color that are particularly overlooked?
So to address your question about the need for housing in the city, is that specifically about housing in general or affordable housing?
I think both. When looking at preservation efforts, the balance between the historic preservation and the need, whether it's for new housing, infrastructure, or the focus on economic development.
Okay, so I think that the city is experiencing a need for housing in general. That's something that I am very aware of. I also do support affordable housing under that topic. I think that the commission, at least during the time that I've been on it, has in fact approved a large, one example of a large housing project that was indirectly behind approved a large, one example of a large housing project that was indirectly behind St. Augustine's Church in the Lower East Side. And it was, I believe, a 20-story tower for residential, so a large building was approved. And the great thing about it in my mind is that it provided needed housing, but at the same time, it funded the restoration of the church that was adjacent to it. In terms of your question about how to address the needs of the five boroughs, I would go back to a bit of the question that was asked before and combine it with the fact that the commissioners, I do think, can work with the staff in terms of seeking designations. And if that is, is a goal of ours, is to increase the amount of representation by all five boroughs and areas that may not have gotten that protection for historic fabric, it's something that we could work with our staff to help push for more designations. But in general, as said before, it is generally a staff-selected process. But I think that it's something we can all work together to help improve and get equality in terms of where and what is being designated in the city.
Yeah, thank you for those questions. In terms of the first one, LPC with historic preservation versus development, and I think what we're talking about is probably housing, because housing is such a big priority for New York City. And on LPC, I think we're very aware of this. We have done a lot of development within historic districts on individual vacant lots and on non-contributing structures such as garages and things like that. We're also very proud that we've done some adaptive reuse projects. So for example, 43 West 22nd Street in the Ladies Mile Historic District was an Art Deco factory building. And I think they created 150 new residential units. So I think it's something that we are very aware of and that whenever it's possible, I think we very much want development, especially housing, you know, even within our historic districts. And secondly, you asked about how can we better reflect diversity and historically overlooked, I guess, buildings. I think over the last two years during my term, I think we've done a lot of designations. And we've done a lot of designations in the Bronx. We've done the Croton Aqueduct. We've done, let's see, we've done, I think the Bronx has really been a priority. The Bronx Opera House, the Tremont Library, the Joseph Rodman Drake Park, and enslaved African burial ground. So it's certainly something that's a priority right now for LPC. Thank you.
Thank you for your question. If I recall the first question, I think the important thing to note in your question is balance. And I think for me, without having much experience working on the landmarks, it's kind of difficult to answer that question without information in terms of what the numbers are and understanding what the proper balance for historic preservation and new development should be. So for that one, I can't really speak too much on. In terms of designation and landmarks throughout the outer boroughs, I think New York is really culturally rich beyond just Manhattan. And I think a lot of, a lot of places throughout the city have possibly been ignored or maybe not have had, been brought to the forefront in terms of recognizing those stories and the public knowing more about them. So I, so I'm encouraged by at least some of the things that I've seen or read about what landmark preservation's priorities and things that they're focusing on. So I, I'm all for just working with the LPC on the unique opportunity to kind of lead in these spaces where we get to kind of honor and identify some of these places that have been ignored over time.
Thank you for your question. I can definitely see the importance of ensuring that the infrastructure for the residents of the city is provided. When it comes to the needs of housing, I do understand this is a, it's a larger problem and to actually come to some type of head, we definitely need to potentially even think outside of the box about it. As mentioned before, non-contributing sites could be looked at. Also, we may even start to reimagine how we actually think about building envelopes themselves. I guess these are just a couple of ideals to kind of just spark conversations, but definitely new conversations can be had to see what we can actually, what we can actually provide, to provide some type of warranted change.
Thank you for your question. The development of housing is certainly a critical need in New York City right now. And I would just say that I believe the role of preservation is to manage change, not to prevent it altogether. And that would include, you know, development of new housing or other infrastructure, as you noted, both in new buildings or, you know, in the conversion of existing buildings as well. With regard to, you know, sort of representation of, you know, geographic diversity within landmarks, I think that's critically important, you know, as I mentioned in my answer to Councilmember Hudson's question. And, you know, I know that Chair Carroll, I believe, has made it one of her objectives actually to prioritize designations that reflect the diversity, you know, of New York culturally and geographically. So I would look forward to supporting those efforts.
I appreciate those responses. I just have two more, but just in the same vein of around this question. I represent Parkchester, which is a really, it's a neighborhood that has the same architect as Sidetown. We have terracotta statues that are unique to Parkchester itself. It's not historically landmarked, and it causes, the conversation around that causes a lot of different tensions because of the potential risk of the, you know, increasing costs for people that live within the condos that are there. So how would you folks balance carrying out LPC's preservation mission with competing community voices, for example, between residents who support landmarking and those who are concerned about increased costs and restrictions that can lead to potential housing unaffordability? And anyone can take this, not all of you have to, if that's easier.
I'm sorry, but can you, can you repeat the question one more time?
Sure. How would you balance carrying out LPC's preservation mission with competing community voices? For example, between residents who support landmarking and those concerned about increased costs and restrictions that can lead to potential housing unaffordability?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think, I think again, I think it's really the staff that goes through and identifies a lot of these sites and proposes these historic districts. But I think one of the reasons that we don't get a huge number of proposals is that they spend a lot of time doing the research, and I do think that they spend a lot of time really talking to the stakeholders, whether it's the property owners, the neighbors, you know, the local politicians. I think they do a very good job of talking to the stakeholders and making sure, you know, that the timing is right and that, you know, to try and meet their needs to the extent possible. So I think a lot of that stuff probably goes behind the scenes, you know, before something is proposed. Once it gets to us, I think something that's very important is the public testimony. You know, we encourage the public to come and speak, either supporting, you know, a potential landmark designation or, you know, voicing their concerns. And I think that's a very important part of the process.
I guess I can add to Angie's comments there by saying that the, there does tend to be a public opinion that landmarking a property gives more restrictions, but at the same time, there's also data that says landmark properties are cherished and have more value because of them. I think that that is something that we hope can be educated to the public, that landmarking is in fact something to cherish, the culture and the history of a place or an event. In terms of, we don't really, we aren't involved in that process of negotiating between existing owners and whether or not they decide or not that they want to pursue landmarking for their structure. So tenants, for example, and owners who may or may not agree on that, it is not in our purview to determine who has the right to decide.
Okay. And then just my last question around climate and sustainability, as you folks are super familiar with, something we are grappling with. How do you think LPC can better integrate climate resiliency, like reducing emissions, keeping to our goals of retrofitting buildings into the decisions without compromising historic character?
I guess we should probably start with that. Yeah, climate sustainability comes up quite a bit when we review a lot of these renovations. You know, barrier-free access comes up in a lot of the parks, Central Park, Prospect Park, a lot of, some of the stuff that they're doing is ensuring that the water drains more appropriately because flooding is an issue. I know that in a lot of the historic districts, when they're doing roof additions, we're also approving a lot of solar panels. And we also try to make sure that when they're replacing windows, that they're replacing with energy efficiency windows. So I'd have to say that it comes up quite a bit. Climate sustainability is something that's very top of mind. And to the extent that we can, when they do renovate, we do discuss it and we do challenge the property owners to be sustainable.
Yeah, I would support Angie's, again, her comment there is, we definitely ask many questions and we do encourage a resilient approach to any proposal that's coming to us. But I think in terms of what the city needs, it is also, at least for myself, I will speak, an understanding that buildings and occupants and certain uses do have requirements, that life safety is a big issue, accessibility is a big issue. And so that when we are looking at applications that address these issues, that we keep that in mind with regard to how they may or may not affect the historic building or its fabric.
I might add that, you know, the climate crisis is one of the greatest threats and challenges that I think this generation faces. And the number one best decision you can make is to keep a building and reuse it instead of tear it down. And I suspect all the architects here and on the commission have experience, as I do, with how to integrate insulation into historic buildings, how to integrate high-performance windows into historic buildings, how to integrate resiliency. There's building technology evolving, quite honestly, constantly with new products, new methodologies all the time. And so, you know, architects on the commission could bring that experience to bear.
Thank you, folks. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you, guys. Congratulations on your nomination, renomination. Thanks. We have one more nominee, and then we're going to move into public testimony. This one is for, sorry, is next, is up for the New York City Tax Commission. Pursuing its sections 31 and 153 of the New York City Charter and by letter dated April 25th, Mayor Eric Adams requests the advice and consent of the council regarding the appointment of Robert Firestone to be president of the Tax Commission within the New York City Office of Administrative Tax Appeals. Tax Commission is charged with the duty of reviewing and correcting all assessments of real property within the New York City, within New York City that are set by the New York City Department of Finance. Any commissioner shall exercise such other powers and duties as the president of the commission may from time to time to assign. Commission is a president and six commissioners, all who are required by law to have at least three years of experience in the field of real estate or real estate law. At least one resident of each borough must be included among the commissioners. President receives an annual salary of $221,000, $151,000. Commissioners receive an annual salary of $25,677. Robert Firestone, a resident of Manhattan, has been nominated by the mayor to serve as the president of the Tax Commission for the remainder of a six-year term expiring on January 6, 2026. Since 2006, he's served as commissioner on the New York City Tax Appeals Tribunal, which hears appeals on income tax, excise tax, and real estate tax assessments. From 1993 to 2006, he was an attorney in the Tax and Bankruptcy Division of the New York City Law Department, where he supervised tax litigation, rising to the position of Assistant Chief and Senior Counsel of Division. From 1990 to 92, he was a tax associate at the firm of Sullivan and Cromwell. He's an adjunct professor at New York Law School, where he teaches a course on state and local taxation. He holds a JD from New York Law School, an LM in tax from New York University School of Law, and a BS in accounting from Brooklyn College. Before you testify, please raise your hand to be sworn in, right hand to be sworn in.
To affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee and answer all councilmember questions.
Thank you. Please make an opening statement.
Oh, is this good? Okay. Thank you. Good morning, Chair Powers and members of the New York City Council Rules Committee. Thank you for considering me for an appointment as president of the New York City Tax Commission. It is a privilege and an honor to be considered. I am a lifelong resident of New York City, born and raised in the East Flatbush section of Brooklyn. I have also lived in Midwood and Sheepshead Bay, and for the past 30 years in Manhattan, where we raised my daughter. I am proud to have served in the city and state government for over 44 years, all in the field of taxation. I have served 13 years as a tax auditor for the state, where I also was asked to assist on issues involving the implementation of audit policy, which included having input into drafting the investment capital regulations under the corporation tax. And another 13 years as an attorney with the city law department, where I supervised tax litigation and advice to city agencies. I was recognized by both the State Department of Taxation and by the city law department for my public service. I have served for over 18 years as a commissioner with the Tax Appeals Tribunal, hearing appeals of determinations rendered by administrative law judges on the city's income and excise tax cases. And as a hearing officer with the Tax Commission. During my 18 years with the Tax Commission, I conducted property tax valuation hearings on over 26,000 applications and conducted many hearings on applications claiming exemption from the real property tax. I hope to continue that service as president of the Tax Commission, and I believe that my experience has prepared me to do so. As the council is fully aware, annual property tax assessments are the city's single largest source of revenue. There are over 1 million parcels of real property in the city, and under New York State and city law, each property owner has the right to an independent administrative review of the assessed value of its property before the Tax Commission. The Tax Commission's mission, and my mission if appointed president, is to ensure that determinations of real property assessment appeals are made fairly, efficiently, and in a transparent manner. That mission can be fully accomplished only if property owners receive adequate guidance to better understand their assessments and knowing how to proceed to appeal them, and generally feel that they are being treated fairly when they appeal their assessments. Particularly regarding property owners who are unrepresented, providing adequate guidance on how to pursue an appeal and demonstrating that the process is fair, will encourage them to pursue their appeals by dispelling any perception that their efforts will be futile. During my 18 years with the Tax Commission, I have attended many borough outreach sessions as a representative of the Tax Commission, where I explained to individual property owners how their assessments and taxes were calculated, walking them through the calculations step by step, and explained what they need to establish in order to challenge the assessment. If the challenge of the assessment of a Class 1 property requires the property owner to use comparable sales, I will explain to them how to access the rolling sales files on the Department of Finance website and the general process to find appropriate comps in the area. I also provide this information to unrepresented applicants during hearings. In hearings involving unrepresented applicants, I answer their questions, explain what they were missing in their presentation, and what they will need to provide in future hearings. By explaining what they need to show at hearings... By explaining what they need to show at hearing, unrepresented applicants are more likely to leave with a favorable perception of the Tax Commission. I find this aspect of the work extremely gratifying. I also intend to continue our process to annually reviewing the Tax Commission's forms, instructions, and procedures to improve accessibility and clarity. I wish to also add that while at the law department's Tax and Bankruptcy Division, where I supervised the staff attorneys in tax litigation and rendered tax advice to other agencies, I also was involved in drafting tax legislation. On one major project, I worked with a law firm to draft legislation that would incentivize development in Lower Manhattan, which was placed on the congressional calendar as the World Trade Center Holding Company Act of 2003, and which unfortunately was removed from the congressional calendar when the United States invaded Iraq. In addition to my experience at the Tax Commission hearing real property tax cases, I have also encountered real property issues under the excise tax litigation I supervised while at the law department and here as a tribunal commissioner. The real property transfer tax involves legal issues pertaining to the ownership, leasing, and financing of real property. Some of these issues appear under the commercial rent and occupancy tax, and I have even encountered significant real property legal issues under the corporation tax and the unincorporated business tax. In conclusion, I believe that my experience well qualifies me to administer the real property tax appeals process in a manner that is as fair, transparent, and efficient as possible. I again thank you for your attention this morning, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Thanks for the testimony. Just a few questions here. You've informed the council that I've appointed as president of the Tax Commission. You intend to continue to serve in your appointment as commissioner of the New York City Tax Appeals Tribunal. Section 115 of the City Charter provides that no officer shall hold any other appointed office except if the mayor authorizes a person or writing to accept a civil office, and no compensation or salary is provided. Has the mayor provided written authorization to you, and have you provided to the city council at this point in time?
I'm sorry, it's a little hard for me to hear some of it.
Sorry, I said, have you provided, has the mayor provided a written authorization to you to serve on both the New York City Tax Appeals Tribunal?
Yes, yes. I mean, 1115A requires, says you can get a waiver, which we can get. We've been informed by, first of all, by COIB that there's no conflict. The Tax Commission and the Tax Appeals Tribunal have entirely different jurisdictions, and they're not overlapping. The Tax Commission has jurisdiction to hear real property tax cases, and the Tax Tribunal has jurisdiction to hear income and excise tax cases, and there's no overlap, there's no conflict. So, and all of the prior presidents of the Tax Commission have also been presidents of the Tax Appeals Tribunal for the last, you know, the two, last few. But we can get a waiver, and that would be, you know, possible.
Yeah, are you planning to get a waiver?
We, yeah, the mayor would issue one, sure.
Okay. Yeah, so I think it would be helpful, we got the letter from the mayor that gave the authorization for both, just because our reading of the charter means we believe there's a need for the mayor to authorize, not a COIB interpretation, but a mayor authorization. So if you can provide that to the council, that would be helpful.
Yes.
And then the qualifications for Tax Commission are different from the Tax Appeals Tribunal. Members of the Tax Commission are required to have experience in real estate or real estate law. Tribunal members must have experience in tax law. I think you've spent your career as a tax associate in private practice and a tax lawyer in the law department. If there's a distinction between tax law and real estate law, can you just provide us with your understanding of what the distinction is between those two things?
Between tax law and real estate law? Yes. Well, I mean, the real estate law or real estate taxation?
It's my understanding that the members of the Tax Commission are required to have experience in real estate or real estate law.
Okay. So you want to know my experience in the two?
Yeah.
Or, okay, sure, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I wasn't sure what you were asking. Yeah, I've, I've served on, in terms of real estate law, I've served on the Tax Commission as a hearing officer for over 18 years, during which time I conducted real property valuation hearings on over 26,000 applications. And I've also heard many appeals of, on applications claiming exemption from the real property tax. I also attended many borough outreach sessions during those 18 years, where I had the opportunity to explain to individual property owners their assessments and how to commence an appeal before the Tax Commission. I, in addition to that, I've, during, many of the cases that I supervised and litigated during my 13 years at the law department, and heard on appeal during my 18 years on the Tax Appeals Tribunal, involved issues of real estate law, so like the real property transfer tax, and commercial rent and occupancy tax, and also even corporation tax and unincorporated business tax, I encountered real estate law in many of, some of the bigger cases. So I have the background in that area, and, yeah, that's.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, members? Okay, congratulations on your nomination. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We're now going to move to public testimony on the nominees that we just heard from. I have four names here. We're going to hear from Matt Dillon, Simeon Bankoff, Andrea Goldwin, and Scott Elliott. Thanks for joining us. I know it was a little bit of delay. We'll start our testimony over here, and we'll go to left. Yeah, thank you.
Hey.
Just please introduce yourself when you speak.
Good afternoon, Chair Powers and Councilmember Brewer. I'm Andrea Goldwin, speaking on behalf of the New York Landmarks Conservancy. The Conservancy is a 52-year-old organization dedicated to preserving, revitalizing, and reusing New York's historic buildings and neighborhoods. My statement made a little more sense when the nominees were still in the room, but I will just go ahead with that. As we welcome the returning and new nominees to the commission, we note that this is a crucial time for preservation in the city. We believe preservation has lived up to Mayor Wagner's expectations when he signed the Landmarks Law 60 years ago. The Conservancy's comprehensive study on the economic benefits of preservation quantified the tremendous benefits. Less than 5% of the city's land is under the regulation of the Landmarks Commission, but those historic properties over-deliver for the city. Yet today, the emphasis is only on building as much as possible in as many places as we can. The second upzoning of a historic district is currently going through the approval process. If approved, it will add development pressure to the historic blocks of Midtown South. But with 95% of the city not under LPC review, surely there's room for additional building. We support affordable housing. Many historic buildings provide existing affordable housing. We support converting underutilized commercial, institutional, and other types of building into more affordable housing. We want to ensure that New York's rich diversity of architecture continues to enhance the city, creating jobs, housing New Yorkers, encouraging sustainability, and welcoming visitors from around the world. Our individual landmarks and historic districts maintain the city's identity. We ask the nominees, hopefully they'll hear this, to protect those buildings and protect them from upzoning and inappropriate development. They will help preserve the heart of the city by doing so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Matt Dillon, and I, you know, I would like to just start off by saying that landmarks are incredibly important to me. I live in New York, I'm a New York City resident, I live on the Upper West Side, and this is not my first time down here to City Hall. I was here 15 years ago as part of the Committee to Save St. Brigid. I remember Gail. And fortunately, I have to say, at that time, I was a little bit shocked that a couple of buildings right on Tompkins Square Park were ready to be razed, and I couldn't believe that that was going to happen. And fortunately, those buildings are standing today, and that neighborhood has maintained its integrity, and I think that's really important. I live on the Upper West Side. I have had the privilege to be actively participating with the church on the quarter of 86th Street and Amsterdam Avenue. It's a Presbyterian church, and it houses the center at Park West, which is a cultural center, and it serves the community. It serves the entire community, worshippers as well as artists. We have many programs and projects we've been doing there, as well as it serves the community, young people. We, it's just, it really is part of the lifeblood of the neighborhood. And that's important to me on a personal level, living in that district, but also, I really feel it's really important that this city preserves the architectural integrity that is here. Without, without our landmarks, without our, without our distinctive architectural character, we're losing so much. I mean, this city is so important to that. I've traveled the world, I've seen the mistakes that other countries have made, and I've also seen the benefits of other cities by maintaining and protecting. And I think, I want to point out that I think that's what, that's what the, is that my buzzer for me?
You can finish.
Anyway, that's my spiel on, it means a lot to me, the, you know, preserving and protecting the integrity of this city through its architecture. Really hugely important. And I'll pass it over to you.
Thanks, thanks, Matt. Hi. Hello, I am Scott Elliott. I run a nonprofit theater company in New York City called The New Group. I founded it 30 years ago, still thriving in spite of all the challenges that the arts face in New York City at the moment. You know, when I first started 30 years ago, you know, I made a decision to not build a building or build a monument to my company, but to occupy spaces around the city and bring communities together, you know, through the work that we do. And, you know, I've seen over the 30 years, you know, the first one I was in, we got kicked out because it got knocked down, the next one we were in, we got kicked out because it got knocked down. It's been sort of a series of events. Now, developers have come in and have built theaters, newer theaters in their buildings. You know, we occupy them, but they lack a lot of character and things that have really brought artists to New York, which is sort of, you know, the hub for artists. And, you know, places like the church, other places around, provide opportunities for us that are a little less expensive or a lot less expensive for people to be able to actually make work. And we all know how important arts are for New York City. If the arts went away, if the artists moved away, it wouldn't be a good thing. And, you know, you know, we all came here because, I mean, I personally live in a modern building, right? And my partner's a real estate broker, and, you know, Charles Renfro, the world-renowned architect, sits on my board of directors. So I'm not against progress. That's not what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is we have to preserve for the artists in New York places like this. Of course, I could speak for communities in general, but because I'm arts-focused, I'm speaking, you know, for arts and how arts intersects with community. But the landmarks that are up are, they feed us, they feed artist souls, and artist souls fill this, feed this city. So I encourage you to, you know, help us preserve. Progress, yes, but also preservation of character, so that artists continue to come here, and the city can thrive because of that. Okay, I'll stop before my buzzer.
Good afternoon, I'm Simeon Bankoff, longtime former, longtime observer of the Landmarks Preservation Commission, former executive director of the Historic Districts Council, also president of the Fine Arts Foundation, and for full disclosure, also a historic preservation consultant, working with the Center for West Park. Should the nominees get a copy of my remarks, I wish they were still here, I would say that this is going to be the most important, boring appointment they will ever have, that they are going to be sitting, listening to very, very, very small, minute things that are very, very, very important, and that they should be rigorous in the regulation of the Landmarks Law and be expansive in their designation of the Landmarks Law. That I would ask the nominees, both the renewals and the new ones, to be bold in their conversation. Talk about big, take big swings, have good public conversation and advocate, suggest, and engage with the buildings themselves. The preservation community is incredibly involved, opinionated, and knowledgeable. Get to know them. They know things, and even if you disagree with them, don't be scared of them, engage with them, you will find that they are a welcoming, interesting group of people. Finally, and I think this speaks to something that Commissioner Masters said, I believe that commissioners have the power to set the agenda for the meetings, that they can bring things up, particularly with regard to designations, that the staff of the Landmarks Commission is under-resourced and expert and wonderful as they are, should not be the gatekeepers to what our public commissioners. And there is a role in all of this, for the commissioners to be fair, impartial, but advocates for the properties. That is all. I've spent a lot of time in front of this committee in previous administrations. I would just suggest in my last remaining minutes to, once again, perhaps reorder these meetings so that the public can go first, and then the commissioners can perhaps, with the council people, who had incredibly fulsome, and thank you for that incredibly fulsome and helpful conversation, you could build off of some of the concerns that the public had. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we do have Mark Ruffalo on Zoom. Okay.
Hello, can you see me?
We can hear you.
Okay, good. Hi, it's Mark Ruffalo. I'm sorry, I was there, I had to leave. I was an hour late for work, but I wanted to, I wanted to participate, and I wanted to, I wanted to weigh in with the commissioners. It's sad that they were, they were actually taken out of the room. I just found out, but it does feel like a, just for the city council, and thank you, Chairman Powers, for having us today. It just feels, from my experience with landmarks and the general counsel, to be kind of indicative of the relationship that landmarks has with the public today. They're sequestered, they, they, they spend more time talking to developers and so on and so forth than the public gets to speak to them. And it was an experience that I had when I first met with landmarks, which was on the street of 86th Street. Gail Brewer was there, and the council for landmarks refused to allow the tenant, the center, to speak about the church. And so I urge you, as a city council, to do all you can to make sure that, that we have a connection to our commissioners, because they're so integral to the quality of the city and the quality of what we see, and those are economic drivers. So I want to just move to the church, the center at West Park, which I'm part of, and just say how much in the past two years, we've seen an influx of support. This goes back to this question about where does the public sit within the conversation with the commissioners. I think it's an integral part of it, and it needs to be, it needs to have an equal sort of footing as any other person or community member in those conversations. Since the two years that we've been trying to save the church, 24,490 people have come expressly to show support for saving that landmark. Now, what that relates, how that relates to the rest of the city is how that drives our economy. And I don't think it's, I don't think we could put enough importance on how important these landmarks are, not just to us as artists, but also to the growth and the economy of the city, which is in great part an art center. And I think something that's happened and is happening with our landmarks is they're being targeted for these kinds of demolitions by neglect. And I know there was only one last year, and I do want to say, I thank the commission for its diligence. They did the due diligence, and they saw that the, that the numbers that were going to be needed to repair the church were inflated by the developer by tenfold. That was, that was beautiful to see, and I, I hope that, I don't know if any of this will ever get to them, but I hope that they... of this will ever get to them, but I hope that they are able to know that they should be independent, they should remain independent. And there's going to be a lot of outside forces that are going to want to control these decisions. I mean, these are multi, multi-million, tens of million, billion-dollar industries that are asking to tear down these landmarks. Lastly, I want to say that we have raised the money to, going back to Gail's question, we have raised the money to fix that shed. It's eight million dollars. Those are the, those are the twenty-four thousand people that showed up to pay for fixing that shed. And I'm asking the commission, I mean, city council, to remember that, because this is, this becomes a loophole. If the money is sitting there and, and the people who are trying to de-landmark for hardship are refusing to make the adjustments, I think the city council has to get involved. And that's the end of my, that's the end of my comments. I'm sorry if I went too long.
No worries. Thank you, and thanks for being here. Sorry we couldn't have you here in person as well, but thanks for testifying on Zoom, and we'll go to our next, next testifier.
Debbie Hirschman, and I have the privilege of partnering with all of these people and with the city council and with Gail as the executive director of the center at West Park. I'm going to be very brief, because what we have established in two years or less, as the D C L A said to me in a meeting, you have now given a model for a self-sustaining community arts and community facility that can then be replicated in other spaces throughout the city. It is really important, as Mark said, we believe in being financially self-sustaining. The city doesn't need one more arts and culture or any entity at this moment to take responsibility for. And the impact, having founded and built the J C C, and you all see the impact that that community center has at Seventy-Sixth and Amsterdam, we being in Upper Manhattan will now and are extending ourselves to Harlem, Washington Heights, and Yonkers. We become the public of Upper Manhattan without a burden to the city and with the capacity to manage this building, which we've proved over two years, the physical plant, we can fix the facade and the roof and take down a twenty-three-year-old sidewalk shed. So all of the reasons that at one point might have been during COVID, reasons to consider destroying and demolishing the landmark have totally been disproved. And we thank you all, because today's meeting was really very important, and the new commissioners, and it is problematic that they didn't get to hear any of this.
Can I say one more thing? Okay, thank you. We'll go to Councilmember.
Can I just say one more thing, just on Debbie's thing?
Time, you gotta do it in order.
Okay.
We gotta, we're gonna.
I want to thank you, obviously. I feel very strongly about preserving the church and the work that you've done to preserve and enhance the cultural center. We can make sure that the commissioners, we have their addresses. The ones who are being nominated have not yet been assigned the job. Let's just be clear. This is a nomination process. Their background has to be investigated even further, so I just want to make that clear. But we do have their addresses. We will send them your testimony. It is all categorized, archived, et cetera, so they will get it. I was a little shocked, nobody had read the four points of hardship. It's all in the Landmarks Preservation Commission material. I memorized it for obvious reasons, but I would say that that would be something to give me a little bit of pause about if you don't know that and you're applying, then even if you're on it, you should mention, you may or may not agree with the four criteria, that's up to you, but at least know what they are. So they will get the material. Thank you for your testimony, and for all those who have been so kind to lend your amazing talent, creativity, and understanding. I am deeply, deeply appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail.
Thanks, Gail.
And we'll have the, sorry, we'll grab it. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Sorry for the wait. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Do we have any other members of the public? Seeing no other members of the public, I'm going to now adjourn the meeting. Thanks, everyone. Thanks. There's a copy, it's like a copy of a letter.